All right, it's March 7th, 2023, and I call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present and myself, Bob Shavitt, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Joseph Hall, alternates Bill Binnell and Michael Johansson, and Mr. T. And John T. is president. So I will seat Bill Binnell tonight in place of Rebecca Sanoski. All right, let's see what we got here. No applications for receipt, no public hearing, so brings us to me, new business. PZ dash twenty-three dash one, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel at one eighty, Talon Turnpike applicant Diane Becker, owner of Mountain LLC. Do we want to run through them one at a time, or just do them in aggregate?
Um, well, I think you can probably take the first two at least together since they're both, since they're across the street, and then they go from there.
So we'll also do.
They're all a little different, yeah.
All right, we'll also do PZ twenty-three dash two, special permit, that's the renewable section fifteen excavation sand and gravel. And that's a one seventy-one Talon Turnpike and the applicants Diane Becker, owner Lawrence Becker.
Yeah, and the ownership has changed since the applications went in, I think we talked to Chris.
Okay, we give that coin definitely.
Yeah, it's not, we're still the owners, but it just went to an LLC, state plan.
Okay. So we want to take the first couple.
All right, so I'm sorry, my name is John Patton, I'm representing the applicant tonight.
Yeah, where do you live, John?
What's that?
Where do you live for the record?
Three forty Talon Turnpike in Wellington. The, so one eighty and one seventy-one Talon Turnpike are, our grandfather, our grandfather Santa gravel quarry operation, one eighty is our quarry operation, one seventy-one Talon Turnpike is our office and Santa gravel operation. The, they've been in existence since the, really the Santa gravel since the fifties, the quarry since the sixties. And a little history lesson, the mid nineties, you guys adopted some regulations to regulate quarries, or basic Santa gravel quarries, grandfather quarries in town. And after ten years, once those regulations were adopted, after ten years, we had to come compliant with those regulations. So we got our first permanent thing, either two thousand six or two thousand eight for there, and then the requirements are every year, we have to come back in every year with a renewed permit. It's, so we do, and it's a little bit repetitive, only because doing those things, we, you know, we think we kind of operate decades. This quarry in Wellington's been operating, this operated for sixty years and has enough reserves to operate probably for another hundred, hundred and forty years. So, but we need a permit every year, so that's what we've done here for. Right now, we haven't changed much, it was actually a slow year last year. So our profile hasn't changed much from the previous year, we're still pretty much the same location, which is the southeast corner of the property, and we're going down one level, so we're going down forty feet. And when we start working our way, working our way back, I think in there, there's the reports for the monitoring, for the groundwater monitoring, reports are there, from what I understand is that there's been a little bit of phosphate zinc, which are above normal levels. So we'll just have to keep monitor those, or not. We have a baseline that's been established, and if something goes above those baselines, then we just have to monitor a little bit more. So the engineers will be doing that, and we none of that, we haven't really changed any of the roads. A big sticking point over the last few years has been the, had been that the that we paved the driveway, repaved the driveway, it kind of, after fifty years, it kind of had its useful life, so we did that. And we did install our monitoring wells on one seventy-one Talon Turnpike. One seventy-one Talon Turnpike is the, is the Santa gravel, we traditionally got Santa gravel lot of, and we're doing beneficial refill, beneficial reuse of fill, to bring that back up at the grade. And we installed last, last year? Last year or the year before, we installed monitoring wells surrounding the property. So when we bring material, bring material back in, you just monitor the water, the groundwater, just in case there's any, any issues. All the fill that does come in is all, is all tested. We have strict protocols, and we work with Haley and Ollard, which is a engineering and environmental firm, a regional firm that monitor everything that comes in. It's, everything that comes in, whether it's clean fill, or has any sort of pollutants, and is tested, regulated, manifested. So we know exactly what comes in. And to bring that back up to grade. None of that, it's, like I said, we kind of operate in decades, nothing, nothing changes too much from year to year. And I think that you've got. Mike, is that the?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So yeah, so we're down in this, right now, we're down in this neck of the woods, we're working right now in the face. So to give you a little bit of perspective, over here is seventy, Route seventy-four. Yeah. Also, this is the driveway, this is Route seventy-four out here, coming in, so we're down there, and then Lucio Row is over here on this.
And those are the collection areas, the blue, right, for stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah, and then we have another collection area over here, because we're, this is going down another forty feet, so we have a collection area here for water, running down. And we'll probably be working there, I don't know, ten, ten, fifteen years.
I guess my only question, is there any thoughts on what created the elevated phosphorus and zinc?
We don't know, it wasn't, it wasn't astronomical, it just was more than usual. Phosphorus typically is either manure or fertilizer, sometimes you'll get some phosphorus out of it. We don't really have any of that sort of chemical makeup in the rock. So I don't, we don't know.
Yeah, like where I work, we had nitrogen, and it was from the lawn fertilizer.
Yeah, that's.
So we stopped using, you know, because we were getting it in that sampling.
And it, and it could be just that sampling, because we've changed another location, some of the water flow could be coming from a different location. But again, it's nothing that's, it's just different. It's higher than it was before, so we're just gonna, we're gonna have to continue to monitor that, everything else as well within baseline.
How high does it have to be before you have to mitigate?
I have to talk, I'm nine shot mitigated, quite frankly, because phosphorus really is a, it's not a danger, it's, and zinc really isn't a big deal either, but they're there, I can find that out, I just, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
So the only, the only thing I got from, from our engineers was that it's more than it was before. But it's, and we're just gonna have to, next time we do it, we'll have to test for it, maybe we'll test twice a year, instead of once a year.
As a percentage, how different, is it five percent, ten percent?
It's on the report, that you have, it's on file. I think those phosphorus, I think you're talking parts per million. What's the difference? I can, I can try to find out some more information on that from the. Like I said, I'm not even sure, phosphorus and zinc, I could kind of understand that's, could be one of the rock components, but the phosphorus was kind of, they had my head scratching, of where that was coming from, because it's just not something that's in the, in the rock.
Any questions from the other commissioners on these two, one, one and two, point three one, twenty-three two? John or Andy, anything?
I guess the only thing that I would ask, John, is with the phosphorus, could that be coming with the back, the fill that you're bringing in?
Other side of the road.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we bring all the fill into one seventy-one, and this is actually is a one eighty.
Okay, I got you.
I just have to keep sampling until they.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Figure it out. And so I just want to clarify, the reason that we don't have a new set of plans is because the original plans that were approved years ago, which establish the finished grades and the depth that they're going, that's what they're working towards. And the regulations allow them to come back on a yearly basis for renewal by the commission. Even though they were issued a special permit, the yearly renewals don't require a public hearing, because it's for one year. If they were requesting more than one year, it would require a public hearing. So we're not changing, they're not being given permission to do anything different than what was originally approved, they're getting a one year, additional one year work on the previously approved site plan, sort of like how you issue an extension on a subdivision approval, or something like that.
Except you can't show this down.
Yeah.
That's my grandfather. But you can't regulate.
And we do have the full, like, all the data, the stormwater report, which is like seventy or eighty pages, which is all here. I can hand it out to you, I didn't print one for everybody, because doesn't look much different than an error printout from a, from a laser printer, when I look at it, but we can, I can give you any of these if you're interested, which has all the testing and all the sampling.
Yeah, that's, I think that, that was in, what was filed.
Yeah, they gave it to us, but I just didn't run copies for them, because it was included in there, but it shows all that stuff, and then the the person who submitted, the, I think who wrote the letter that's in the packet there, is the same.
Jen.
Jen, she's the one who's been before this.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's presented to us before.
So that's kind of.
A couple of years ago, yeah.
Actually, yeah, she was on last year. Two, I think, two years ago, we kind of put the full, brought a new set of plans in, we did, we did quite a bit.
Some aerials, maybe your.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move on to item three, PZ dash twenty-three dash three, the special permit renewal, section fifteen excavation sand and gravel at nine George Drive. An applicant Diane Becker, owner Lawrence Becker.
That one's, that one's a little bit different than one eighty, one seventy-one, that's actually more or less a processing area, bring material down there from either location, and it gets, it gets crushed and washed down there, so that's, that's a wash plant. In the sixties, when it was started, it was built right next to the Willimantic River, because it was a water source. They brought the water from Willimantic River, and very good to just dump it back into the Willimantic River. So that apparently, that fell out of favor, at least dumping it back into the river, so there's three ponds down there now that recirculate the water. They trap all the, the material that comes, all the washing care that comes out during, during the processing. So there's no real excavation there, but it still falls under that, it's still ramped up, it still falls under that, and all the material that's processed is imported from locations to process it. And nothing's really changed there either.
Okay. Any questions on this one? It's pretty basic. All right, PZ dash twenty-three dash four, special permit renewal, section fifteen excavation sand and gravel at three twenty-eight Ruby Road, applicant again Diane Becker, owner Ruby Associates General Partnership.
This one is not grandfather, but it was permitted, I'm gonna say in the early nineties, late eighties. And we haven't done anything this year, there was no activity up there on that site this year. This is right next to the FedEx facility. And actually, this property actually surrounds, it's the four hundred acres that surrounds FedEx, it goes from Turnpike Road all the way around to Route three twenty. And it's approximately four hundred, four hundred ten acres of design industrial. And there is, there is still some sand and gravel on there, we just have to take it out, which is why we like to continue to keep department active.
Does that include the parcel that, where they're talking about the overflow parking for FedEx, John?
No, that's, well, actually, we sold part of that.
Recycling place, isn't it?
That was a recycling place, the, you have the, the bus parking, and then the recycling area, we sold off of that, I'd say five acres anyways, to that recycling area, where they were gonna, they were gonna be a recycling center. So it's, and then, and so between FedEx and there is where the property, it's Ruby Road.
So when, when that parking lot, if it gets approved, you'll be taking that material out to, for preparation?
No, that's not, that's, that's not sold, that property's been sold. So that's, I got you, that's not part of it, but we still have, there's still a larger one, like I said, there's still four hundred acres there.
Right, okay.
But that, whatever is on the parking lot, that's, that belongs to somebody else.
Okay, got it. I'm good.
So Mike's playing with the map here, if your interest, clarifying.
So this is the piece, this is two sixty-four, which is the one that was the subject of the.
Parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And then this is.
Yeah, so this is, there's FedEx, this is Ruby Lake.
That wraps all the way around.
Yeah, that wraps.
Yeah.
That's a picture. You only think of it that way until you see it on the map.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any, any questions or comments?
No.
How about our other commissioners online here? You good, John? Good, Andy?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I'll say thank.
So do we want to deal with this one tonight? Take it off the schedule, I'm ready.
There's no reason to.
Not at all. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special permit renewals for PZ twenty-three dash one, PZ twenty-three dash two, PZ twenty dash, twenty-three dash three, and PZ twenty-three dash four.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be good for you.
See you next time.
See you next year.
I apologize for the last meeting.
That's all right.
Spaced on it.
No problem. All right, so that brings us to item F, unfinished business, which is not tonight. Have a good night, John. Item G, approval of minutes of February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I moved, I moved to approve the minutes as written.
One second.
Bob's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item H, correspondence, first item, Talon PZC zoning regulation amendment referral, this is the budget.
Just one of the required referrals. So statute requires that if we change the zoning regulation, that impacts land within a distance of the town line, which is pretty much almost every single one we notify, product. The statutes used to say you had to notify the towns directly. So you don't have to notify towns for everything anymore, a lot of towns still do, so this was sent from the Talon PZC, it's a very simple update to their agritourism regs, similar to our farm event facilities, it's, this is sort of their version of that reg that we have. So this is a modification to the SEPA requirements specific to brewery side registering farm wineries. So it's just letting us know that they're doing a texting them, and so we just put that in there as correspondence, I think the public hearing's coming up. There's nothing in it that's crazy obscene, that there, I know what property sort of has prompted, this is nowhere near the town line. This, you know, this is not gonna have impact on traffic, drainage, or anything pertaining to Wellington, so it's just sort of a required procedural thing.
Brings us to item I, public participation for items not listed on the agenda, anyone from the public having anything? I see Mr. Toolis with his hand up.
Here. Can you hear me okay? Sorry, I didn't unmute.
Yes, we can, Ralph.
Good. Last meeting, you had a strategic development zone workshop, which essentially excluded the public from any input, which, which troubled me a little bit, because of my background, I had a little bit of experience with this commission, and, and the, the issues that both planning and zoning and EDC run through. And when it came to public participation at that meeting, it wouldn't allow me to say anything, which I kind of understand, but then again, one of the reasons for not allowing discussion on items on the agenda has to do with applications. This was not an application, so you know, by allowing public participation on an agenda item that consists of an application, you are in essence holding a public hearing, even though it wasn't noticed as such. But that's not what this was. Anyway, I, I would hope at some point in the near future that EDC and planning and zoning would redo this and consider input from the people who live here. I have some thoughts on this STZ zone and, and how it could work. And I would certainly think that it could be constructive to both planning and zoning and EDC. And that's basically it, if you have any questions for me, I welcome them, but you don't have to, that's all.
Thank you, Ralph. Any other public comment? Nick Tella.
Hey, Nick Tella, forty-nine Myrtle. So the presence to speak, open to agenda items, it's kind of funny that Ralph was just touching on that, because it's something I wrote down here. And now, I, I don't have the energy and time because of the school building stuff, but where can we, like, why can we not talk about agenda items, because, like, for the cannabis situation that got passed, that went against our regulations? Like, when that was going on, we couldn't speak upon, now, I, I don't know what the technicality is in, in the regulations, but it just, it doesn't seem right when every other board, you know, I attend almost every meeting from the other boards, and they allow agenda items, agenda items to be discussed. I just wish that would change for planning and zoning. Again, the SBZ, SBZ concerns, you know, the workshop, you know, the public should have had participation in that, a little bit more than what was offered there. You know, let's see what else here, you know, the rural towns are being attacked, I'll see you guys probably paying attention to what's going on in Ashford there, you know, ironically, Mike's part of that, too. I just, you know, the vibe that I'm getting from the, the committee and such is, is just not wanting to protect the rural identity of this town. And it wants to open up the regulations to have large developments come. I don't know why we don't become more restrictive. But I don't know, just my concerns, thanks.
Thanks, Nick. All right, anyone else? Okay. This is item J, staff report discussion. Item one, informal discussion, recent inquiry pertaining to home occupations.
We had a call into the office a little while ago about someone who wanted to know if effectively small engine repair for like lawnmowers and things was allowable through a home occupation permit, special permit. Our regulations have a bunch of stuff that, you know, things including but not limited to are allowed, and there's some language would say home occupation shall not include. And it says, I want to read the whole section, home occupation shall not include restaurants, tea rooms, or other eating or drinking places, dog kennels, animal hospitals, barber shop, or beauty parlors, having more than one sink with, with one chair or cutting hair, or automotive service, supply, sales, or repairs, except for vehicles registered in the name of the tenant or residing dwelling. So this, it talks about a motive repair, which is not.
Two different things.
Right, and so I, I don't want to tell them no, and I also don't want to run him through the special permit process only for him to show up, and if he chooses to move forward and have the commission feel like it's not appropriate.
Kudos to this guy for asking, and because a lot of people can run something like that illegally, and nobody'd be the wiser.
Yeah, and who knows, maybe he got into an argument with a neighbor, and, and he's trying to figure out what it, but I, I don't, I don't know the location. I wanted to get your feedback on this, this is something that you think would fall under that, or?
That doesn't fall under automotive, they're two different things, it's not an automobile.
Right.
An automobile repair shop implies a lot heavier duty. Repair is greater amounts of fluids, you know, you're.
Is it a traffic concern? Just because if you have a lot of small engine repair stuff, people constantly coming in and out, dropping stuff off.
Typically, a small engine repair place, you'd have a small shop, you know, you know, the you're talking lawnmowers, you know, riding tractors, tailors, you have chainsaws, that sort of thing.
Again, depending on the density of the neighborhood, people may be upset with the comings and goings. I think the amount would matter. And the only other thing I think we need, we need to keep a lid on how many mower bodies and engines and such are laying around in the yard, that gets to be, can be, can come catch on, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the regs, not that it's necessarily the same thing, but they do allow radio and television repairmen, which is obviously, the, the thing is different, but they're bringing something broken on the property, repairing it. It's typically all about external evidence, right, and so there are all of those things comings and going, appointments, how, how much external evidence is, are there things outside, or does it all need to be shed, or those are all things you can deal with through the permit process, so it doesn't give them a license to just have this stuff thrown all over the place. So I think it's probably a situation, when we were talking about this, where the devil is probably in the details, right, if it's operated correctly and at the right scope and scale, it might work. So, but, you know, if it's sort of done carelessly, it could probably be a big issue.
Or it becomes like a junk pile of derelict, you know, equipment, that, that's not, I think, the way we'd want to go, but if it's a well-contained, most of it undercover, and a, and a building, that's doing its work. Yes, Bill.
There used to be a place on seventy-four, it was Ted's, I don't know if that was in Wellington or, or Ashford, but he had a repair place. And he had a nice big driveway, he had a big garage, so, you know, all this stuff could really be contained in there. I don't know if that was part of our town, and Ted's lawnmower, he's been gone about, about five years or so.
I think that was Ashford.
Might have been.
I think you're right.
There's one up there, you know, Eastford.
Used to have a lot of older small engines, repairs, that's still around? That was here for a while?
Sure, yeah, maybe, but that, that place can.
Yeah, the one on the left.
It's a little sketchy.
Yeah, it's just kind of Ted's was clean and it was, had plenty of room for traffic. You know, for people to come in, bring their stuff, couldn't even bring a trailer in there, you know, if you were delivering something.
I think it also depends if it's a small engine like that, if, if the property is, you know, one point eight acres and there's houses right next door. I mean, that's not much leeway. I think most of the ones that we're referring to are, you know, they're pretty much standalone properties. There's, there's a number of acres around as well. So that's, that's only my, that's my, that would be my concern.
I guess we just need to understand where and, you know, what.
Yeah, I mean, our regs, yeah, we don't. Like I said, the outside storage stuff would not, would not fly. So I mean, we'd have to go through the regulations and make a decision as to whether or not he felt like he could address all of those criteria. I just wanted to make sure that the, the use on its face didn't go one way or another before we gave him the decision.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the use. It's not a motive. It's, it's just how, you know, how would it be permitted by to keep it least intrusive to the neighbors?
Yeah, don't want to get into a situation where, you know, we've had several incidents with, you know, these are like quads or something or dirt bikes. But, you know, if you're repairing small engines, you're going to be running them and then it'll be run, you know, hard, then it'll be run normal. And again, I just think it's the proximity to your neighbors.
Keep in mind, you fix a chainsaw, you gotta test it. You gotta, you know, grab it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything.
But if it's done during
Yeah.
Business hours, which should be
Yeah.
All right, so what we'll do is sort of run him through all the regs and show him, you know, every section and make sure that he based upon what he's thinking or
Okay.
And then if he decides to move forward, it'll be, that would be a special permit, wouldn't be a certificate of owning compliance, so he'd come back for you guys.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. All right, and item two, accessory dwelling units.
So this is just, and we talked about the accessory, the opt-out, which happened a couple of months ago and had the gentleman who's come into the office and was spoken near a couple of times about wanting the commission to take the topic up or start to consider it. So I just put together a quick memo which shows the requirements or sort of outlines the, the basic standards that we have on the books now. And then, yeah, some modifications to consider. So these are the key pieces, right? The first one, there shall be no separate outside access for any, we call them separate family quarters, in-law apartment, accessory dwelling unit, accessory apartment, whatever you refer to it as. So the intent there is if, if you can only get to the apartment from the inside of the house, then it's kind of speaks to ours, the third bullet there, which is that it needs to be occupied by a member of the family. And so these are the pieces that are basically in conflict with the public act, which is why we needed to opt out because public act, you can require the owner to live in one of the units. But you can't say you've got to live on the property and you can only rent it to a family member. And so that's to promote housing, access to housing, but also to provide housing viability to someone who may find themselves in a position where their mortgage isn't as easy to pay as it was. And so being able to get some of that rent offsets those costs.
Unwilling connect could easily be college kids or whatever.
It could. We, because we opted out, we're not subject to any of those things. We, you still can limit the maximum size, can still limit to one bedroom. And so you, like I said, still requiring the owner to live on the property. We can allow attached and detached. So you can still control a lot of the operational pieces of it. So at the bottom, I've included a couple of things just based upon what we're seeing statewide as far as changes. So the first one I mentioned, which is to require the owner to live on the property, but not only to rent to family, allowing it to be located in a detached dwelling. Basically reviewing setback standards. So the public act says you can't have more stringent standards on a detached ADU. Again, we've opted out, so perhaps we establish setbacks if someone builds one so that they're not stuck next to a neighbor in property line. Establishing a maximum size. So that's another way to make sure that you don't rent it out to five college kids. It is if you, you know, the minimum size is six hundred square feet or something and it's only one bedroom, you're going to be limited to how many people could be in there. And then the exterior access. So I guess the, the first step doesn't necessarily be something that you guys decide tonight would be, do we want to change the accessory growing here regs at all? Or do we like the way that they're on the books? And then from there, we can figure out if any of this makes sense or, you know, what, what your thoughts are.
We can do state regulations with a number of things with housing. State saying you can't regulate the size and such. How, how does, how does that fall onto these accessory?
So what we can't say is an accessory dwelling unit has to be at least five hundred square feet. We can cap the top, but we can't tell them where they have to start. That's dictated by health and building code.
Okay.
But because we opted out, we can, we have more flexibility. It's a separate act and separate case law that says we can't tell someone how big a house has to be. But we have a lot more flexibility since we did opt out.
So setbacks on the property that pertain to the main structure, that perimeter distance from the boundaries also apply to the auxiliary units?
Well, that's how, that's what we'd have to figure out because right now we don't allow detached. So it would be part of the primary structure. So you could, you could say, right, yeah, we're going to allow it to be detached, but you need to meet the same setbacks as the primary building or establish something separate. There, from the ones that I've seen and, and I have not seen more than, I mean, I've seen five detached period across every town that I'm in. Because they're so expensive to build. And if you're going to do a detached, then you're going to move it really far off the main house, which then means you're putting in a separate septic. Because otherwise you want to be able to tap the existing, in which means you want to close. So there's no real purpose to detach it per, per septic properties.
I don't know. I had a pretty bad situation going on next to me a few years ago, like a single family house right next door with all kinds of issues. You know, parties all the time, cops not interested. So nobody can convince me this stuff's not going on right now. Okay. And it's barely enforced. So I'm, I'm not in favor of loosening things up for things that are already happening and not really being enforced. I, I lived it. We have very little recourse. The only reason anything happened there, there was a fatality on site and it went from there. So it was like living in a nightmare for several months. Multiple calls to Troop C. Screaming arguments outside the driveway. This ridiculous situation that went on and on and on. So.
From the other end of the spectrum, my wife and I cared for her parents for twelve years in, in home.
And those are your parents. That's completely okay.
Yeah.
With these regulations.
Yeah. It would have been nice to have a, a separate structure, especially for the mother-in-law who would live with us for twelve years. That's another point of view.
Yeah, I think if we're going to consider it, I, I would think that we would want to limit it to one bedroom. The unfortunate thing with these is that if, you know, and I understand that it, it works for the family when it's being planned and when it's built. But then when the property changes, that's when situations can change also to, to the negative.
How are trailers viewed when they're used in a semi-permanent installation on a property? I've seen some trailers that take up residence for quite a long time. Any type of, well, a trailer like an RV would be allowed for temporary dwelling, but not permanent dwelling. A mobile manufactured home is under the eyes of zoning treated as a single family house. These would be kind of like RV
Yeah.
Type. So that one is, that one qualifies. So you can see that, you know, people have set up, you know, a lot of amenities and extra cars and things like that. You know, they have, they have their, their full-time steps to go into it and some, you can see some utilities going to it.
Yeah. They're on jacks like they're
I don't know if they were on jacks, but I did see that they had cords going to it. So like somebody was, you know, trying to supply power there on a regular basis.
Yeah, my wife's uncle came for a couple of weeks and he hydraulic jack to just level it.
Cause I've seen some around places for months.
And I kind of like the first modifications to consider, like, as far as the property owner to reside in either the home or the ADU, but not requiring both units to be occupied by family. So if somebody were to age in place and they needed a aid or something like that, I think that would be, you know, beneficial.
Trying to find the, the language. We kind of talked about it.
The only thing about restrict it to like one bedroom, it's like, well, what if somebody did have like a three thousand square foot house, three or four bedrooms? I don't know.
If somebody wanted to do it.
What?
If somebody wanted to do that, rent out rooms, they'd do it now.
Yeah, they're going to do it anyways, right?
It's going to catch them.
Yeah.
It didn't happen. It's already going on. So it's
Yeah.
I, I just think by limiting it to one bedroom, you So you're holding it in check to a point.
In your case, was the family member in the house or was it basically just being
They rented an entire single family house, a pile of people.
So this would
Yeah.
There's a lot of time in the process.
Well, and there's houses in Wellington that are being rented, rented out to families. But that's not unusual.
For instance.
You know.
Yeah. And houses with carbonless foundations that are being rented.
Right, yeah, right.
We have a house on Red Oak Hill that's rented to students, but fortunately we know the landlord. So whenever there's a problem, the whole street contacts the landlord. It's a little bit of pressure on. We talked about this previously, I think. But the town of Mansfield, we're working with them on some regs and they have, they opted out. And their requirements, obviously they're very concerned about this. They require a deed restriction. So if you get approval for an accessory dwelling, you file a deed restriction on the land record which says that either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling shall be occupied as a primary resident by the record owner of the property six months per year. They define owner. It says occupancy of accessory dwelling is limited to two adult persons. Children under the age of eighteen are the legal responsibility and they'll, they may also reside on the ADU. So it sort of speaks to that issue. Talks about specific sizing for total occupants. And it prohibits the accessory dwelling unit from being sold separate or from lot being subdivided or, and that these restrictions shall run with the land and be binding upon future buyers, et cetera, et cetera. So I thinking about that, when we talked about it initially, I did talk about it with Rich Roberts. And so he said, yes, obviously flies in conflict with PA twenty-one twenty-nine, which is again why he opted out. But that he thought that it, it would be, it's not, that would be a legal thing to do. You could certainly do it as a special permit condition. But he felt that it was certainly stronger to have it as a deed restriction because there's a mechanism for people to find out about it beyond just sort of a special permit record. It also, if the person does that and they're in conflict and there's a title search pertaining to a mortgage modification or sale, the property is not going to sell because the person buying the property is going to pick this up and there's going to be an issue with if, if, for example, both structures are rented, it's going to be picked up upon sale because the owner's not going to be able to pick that up without being in conflict of this. So he felt like it was stronger, but certainly less traditional. But they've had this on the books for a while. So that's our route we could take to really add strength to the occupancy requirement if the commission wanted to.
I think it's a, it's a better way to keep tabs on who's in the house. The non-traditional isn't a bad thing.
Yeah, so they just withhold CO of the accessory dwelling until they have a copy of the deed restriction that's been filed. As I think how they do it.
Any other thoughts on this one tonight?
I think it's just food for thought.
John, Andy, you have anything?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, well. That being said, it's eight eighteen PM, eating adjourned.